Welcome. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting for Tuesday, October 3, 2017. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome. Any comments from the public tonight? No comments, so we will move on to presentations and discussions of issues to the committee, of interest to the committee, sorry. Transportation numbers update.
So, I shared a letter from Linda Baird with you. It's still a little bit in flux. It usually takes a couple of weeks to figure out the bus routes. We were thrown a curve because we started with the year down one driver who quit, I think, in August. And then about some point into the third week, we lost another driver due to a medical issue. So, the buses have been pretty tight and sometimes Linda has had to make an extra run. They're working on it. I've been in touch with the Cape Cod Collaborative. They've been working to train another bus driver. It's kind of interesting because this is a problem not just here this year, but it's all over the country. A lot of school districts are having trouble getting bus drivers because of the, maybe because of the nature of the job, but probably more a result of the economy around the country and people aren't wanting to do that job. So, we're going to keep monitoring it and I expect that one of those drivers will be returning soon.
I have a quick question. So, what happens when she comes back for the students after she drops? I mean, are the students late for school? Are they excused?
No, they wouldn't be. They would be excused.
Okay.
Most of the...
What's that mean, the second one?
Yeah, most of the high school kids, I think she even said it in her letter, when she came back, they had other rides. But, and then fortunately, this time of year, we've had a lot of kids on bikes. It's been amazing how many students are riding to all four schools. It's a good thing, too. So, we have some work to do to sort it out and maybe I'll give you another report, you know, in another month.
That sounds good. One other question I have is about how long would the students be waiting? I mean, I worry about their safety if you're talking about, you know, young elementary school kids and they're waiting. I'm just wondering.
I don't think, for the most part, that it's the youngest children that would be kept waiting. Probably middle and high school kids if they had to do that.
Okay. And hopefully, parents are waiting with them if they're that young.
This is the first one. Yes, do you know anything about the training for drivers? Is it something that they can do here on island or are they required to go off?
They can do a lot of the training, the hours that they need. They get here on buses. The test-taking, I think the written test they have to do off-island.
So, it's not a regular commercial?
It's not. You know, you can't drive a light commercial vehicle and drive a school bus. It's very specific to school buses.
Thank you. Some questions? Comments? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to open house debriefing for the Nantucket Public School Principals.
Yeah.
Do you want to start with the elementary school?
Sure.
Can you come up here?
Yeah, sure.
The hot seat.
Hi. So, we had a wonderful open house as we do every year. We took advantage of being sort of a new school to do things a little differently. As a parent, I have been participating in the high school open houses and Dr. Bucky has done some really fun videos to introduce his staff. So, that was how we started it this year. At NES, we let each teacher group introduce themselves. And then Bridgette McGinnis, who is a teaching assistant in our building, she put the video together. So, I always invite the families into the gym to start. We schedule the open house for two hours and really, it's an hour and a half that's needed. But, so that families come into the gym to start, and our gym was packed. And it looked like it looks every year at open house, but we've done open house pre-K2 one night and 3:00 to 5:00 one night. So, it was the same amount of people in the room this year. We showed the video, which our staff was a little bit hesitant to do, nervous, and then it ended up being a delight. It is now on our website, 16 minutes, but it's pretty terrific. And our staff did a beautiful job. And then we break out, I give a couple of reminders about where you can park at our school and the visitor process for coming in. And then we send them off to classrooms. So, in the classrooms, I had, I would say that the best average is every classroom had 75% of their parents in. One teacher had every single parent. A couple of other classes had, they were missing one or two parents, and very few were under that 75%. So, we really had a wonderful showing. Teachers do different things to share those expectations. Some have PowerPoints, some run a morning meeting, like the responsive classroom morning meetings. Some have things on desks for students to explain to parents. But, one of the things that I insist upon is for teachers to build the partnership with parents by making sure parents understand the expectations for the curriculum that year and the rigor that is expected. And so, teachers have done that with handouts or through the PowerPoint. They share curricular resources. They talk about soliciting volunteers. They go over homework expectations, the big deal field trips for the grade levels. So, our big deal field trips are a little different than they were in the past. They are now your big deals. Ours are a little closer to home. Yeah, so it was really well attended. I would say that we had it scheduled for 6:00 to 8:00, and by 7:30, there were maybe one or two parents left. So, we try to be efficient, but also I encourage parents when they first come in to see me that this is not really an opportunity for a conference as much as it's make the connection and take a look at the things in the classroom. And so, teachers were really creative with scavenger hunts for families to do, and it was very well attended.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any questions? Comments?
Specialists had a lot of visitors as well. Our teacher, music, PE, and ELL teachers did as well, 20 and 25 and 30.
Did it seem more spread out now that the grades that you do have?
Maybe. But, as you know, we've had grade levels in each cluster. And so, open house in the past, we've always split it across two nights. So, it was really like the same thing because we just went to three clusters for those visitors.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi. I'm doing well, thank you. So, we were really excited about our open house this year in a brand-new school and spent a lot of time with the staff figuring about what that could look like at NIS. And so, we collaboratively came up with a vision of shifting it to more of a true open house, but also with the parameters of curriculum expectations have to be shared, and they really wanted it to be student-led. So, that was really exciting, how it all came together. So, our turnout was tremendous. Grade 3 had 87% turnout. Grade 4 was 87%. Grade 5 was about 74%, which was really a great turnout. I think a lot of folks commented on the new school and whole families came to see the building and were really excited about the facility. Some of the comments that we received were that people really, especially like the student tour guide where they had a list of things that they would hopefully take their parents around or families around and see within their classrooms and within the school. So, we encouraged them to see all of their teachers within the school, and they did. They got to all of our spaces. And all of our teachers had information to share with families as well about the teaching and learning happening there. What else? Oh, and we also wanted parents have the opportunity to sign up for parent conferences. Here, we had them with us. So, Chromebooks were at the ready and we're exploring signing up electronically for parent conferences. So, that seemed to work out well also. We also offered some other things that evening. We had Aspen Help in our library so people could go on in. And if they hadn't had the opportunity to update their information or if they weren't sure how to log in, we had people there to assist them with that and advertise that. We also had Mike Horton stationed in the cafeteria, and he offered three different sessions on Eureka Math, our new math program. And the turnout was pretty good there, too, as well. And then I love how, I think this NES also does this, but how they invite other organizations in to fill our hallway and foyer. So, we had the Boy Scouts there, the Girl Scouts there, FOMC was there, Fair Winds was there, Community School, and Sustainable Nantucket were all represented that night and had information for families. It was great. What questions do you have for me?
Wonderful.
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
I really like the idea of the Aspen Help. That really makes a lot of sense early in the year for some of those parents. That might be a nice piece for us all to sort of pick up.
Yeah, especially because you're already bringing the families in instead of offering it at a different time or night. It's nice.
Just get a packet and sometimes you just get to it, but hands-on, I think, makes a difference. And also, parent-teacher conference sign-up.
Yeah. Yeah, while they were there, we tried to get them to do that, too.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before Peter hops up, I just want to share that we did the Aspen Help night in our second week of school this year. We had 50 parents at that.
That's great.
Aspen Workshop. Joanne was terrific and really explained it. And thankfully, Patricia was there because about half were Spanish-speaking. So, we thought that was terrific for our primary students.
Yes, absolutely. Yes. Thank you. Peter?
Hello. So, at the middle school, our turnout was also quite good. I think that we've done the same or similar format for the past couple of years, which was basically to have parents run through their student's schedule. We tweaked it a little bit for the encore courses in that, in the past, there's always a certain day schedule that they followed. And so, in that day, a student may not have all of their encores. And so, then parents didn't get a chance to see all of the encores. So, for the encore chunk of time this year, we just kind of left it open for parents to drop in and say hello to each of the different encore teachers that they wanted to. So, I think that worked out all right. And we've started soliciting feedback from first teachers, and we're going to have the school council work on soliciting some feedback from parents about possibly adjusting it and borrowing some ideas from some of the other open houses that we've heard about this year. So, at the elementary school, you can hear how involved the kids are. And at the middle school, we haven't had kids participate in the open house, but we may in the future have them play a part in it. So, we're going to explore some different options with that for next year. And then the other piece is the high school, you'll hear Jen talk about some of the students serving as interpreters and translating for parents. And we could have used some help in that area, I think. And that would increase some of our participation from some of our Spanish-speaking families in particular. So, some of you were there, so you saw that the turnout was quite good. It's a long night for teachers. Parents have given us pretty positive feedback so far, informally. For teachers, they end up having to give a similar presentation five times, 14-minute presentations. And so, we've also been talking about other ways to kind of streamline that and maybe do, have the whole grade level together, or maybe do grade levels on different nights. We'll play with that. And then the other piece that was new this year district-wide is having each of the schools' open houses in the same week. And there are pros and cons to that. I think we have at least one family that I know of for sure because I interacted with them, who they have kids at each of the four schools, and there are probably a few families in that situation. So, they had a busy week. So, I think for them, it was a little challenging to have all four schools in the same week. But, in terms of scheduling meetings for the schools the rest of the time, it works out well for us. So, there's some things to consider for revising them, but overall, I think it was a successful night.
How long did yours last?
Ours goes from 6:00 to 8:15. So, a little bit longer.
My only feedback, and this is as a parent, two hours is a long time. I mean, you want to know, you want to meet the teachers, you want to get in there, but it's a long night.
Yeah.
I just wish we could kind of sort of find a way to compact it to at a maximum an hour and a half.
Yep. I think, like I'm saying, the idea of having like a grade-level night streamlined like in one location, potentially like in a larger group setting, they can do some of that kind of presentation together. And then with kids involved, they could take them through to where the classrooms, and it could be shorter. And what's going to happen this year is we're going to have at all of the schools some additional nights that teachers will do different presentations and student exhibitions of learning throughout the year. So, the, you know, the necessity of having one open house that checks off a lot of boxes will not be there as much. We can narrow the focus a little bit and streamline it.
So, I was there for three out of the four nights. And it is a long week as a parent, but I have to say that time goes by so fast. It really does. I mean, you're tired by the end of the night, but it goes by and there's so much great information.
Yeah. Hopefully, you're monitoring your steps like as you get...
Yeah, exactly. One thing I did notice as a parent of a sixth grader is I noticed parents also trying to get that one-on-one interaction with their student's teacher and trying to get personal feedback about their student and their progress. So, you know, I was talking to Mike earlier about this, and it would be a really nice, you know, I'm thinking of transitions. And that transition, you know, we have, or we have had conferences at NES, and now there will be conferences at NIS. It might be nice for sixth-grade parents to have that. A lot of sixth-grade parents are having, for the first time, this is the first time they're going into CPS. And it might just be nice for parents to have that one-on-one opportunity with their student's teachers to get them used to the school and, you know, just to transition a little bit easier.
It's a big transition.
It is. It's a big transition for a lot of parents. And it was funny because I noticed a lot of parents just trying to get that feedback.
To me, that's the other part that makes the night longer because you will have those parents that are trying to get that, you know, specific.
Right.
And it kind of makes the time go by. And I'm sure that everyone would like to do that, but, you know, it just doesn't work out that way.
And I know that you do have that availability, and all of your staff is very open about if you have any questions or, you know, you want to set up a meeting or a conference, please do. But I think if there was a set day and time, it just makes it a little bit more maybe enticing for incoming parents.
Yep. We've had some conversations about it. And one of our areas of focus this year is having students take more ownership for their learning. So, if we go in the direction of a specific conference, we'd probably want them to be student-led so that they're part of the conversation.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
I don't want to make us go over the over-under for the length of this meeting that I could talk to you about.
Time constraint.
Not the time. I'm going to get my mind taken. I like those kind of challenges.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we did at my last school, so I've got some.
That's great. Thank you, Peter. Thank you very much. Jen?
Hi, Jen.
Hi.
Well, Dr. Bucky and I couldn't be more excited about how open house went this year. He and I made a concerted effort to really reach out to parents, and we use social media a lot. We've been trying to use social media to our advantage as much as we can this year. We went to a workshop over the summer, and one of the messages they gave us is that if you don't tell your story, someone else will. So, we've been really trying to access social media to tell our story. We also asked advisors to send personal invitations to the parents of the students and their advisory. So, all our advisors reached out to parents and tried to encourage them to come to open house. What we're most excited about is that we were able to, thanks to the community school, use the live translation equipment so that we were able to advertise and provide for our Spanish-speaking families the live translation equipment. So, Eileen Taveras was able to translate Dr. Bucky's speech, and our Spanish-speaking families had the equipment and were able to get that translation. I think that them knowing that these things would be available to them, they'd have access to the information provided, as a result, we had a greater turnout of our EL families. We also provided the PowerPoint presentation in Spanish so that they also were able to not only have Dr. Bucky's speech translated, but they had the PowerPoint presentation in front of them in Spanish. And we created a video this year for our staff, for the first staff meeting, to introduce our staff. And it showed each staff member. It said what their name is, who they are, what they teach, and a statement about why they're an educator. And so, we were able to show that not only at our first staff meeting, but we also showed it at the ninth-grade orientation. And then we were able to show it at open house the other night. We had almost 50 students present at open house to help guide our parents and to help translate for them, which was really amazing. So, that was thanks to Evelyn McKeckern and Eileen Taveras, also the National Honor Society, Nicole Gross, and our school council led by Dan Farrell. They worked together to get student volunteers. There were students everywhere with name tags, and it said whether they speak Spanish, and so that families could reach out to people and ask them where to go and where the classrooms were and which level to go in. So, that was a really, really big help. We were really excited. I think it also brought a different feel, much like the younger grades, to open house when you have students participating and helping parents through the process. I think that it just has a really great feel to open house. And parents like to see that their kids are there and involved and excited about what they're learning. So, as a result of all that, we had about 250 families at open house, which is one of our biggest open houses ever. We also had the biggest turnout of our EL families, which was the most exciting about our open house this year. In full transparency, sometimes because it is such a late evening, we end open house and we think, okay, good, that's done, and we don't have to do that for another year. But this year, we were so excited at the end of it, and we had all these additional ideas about how we can make next year better that we actually left open house thinking, okay, I can't wait till next year because we're going to do this and we're going to do that. So, we left open house this year actually really excited to do it again next year, thinking about all the possibilities. Our goal really was to increase numbers. I think they dwindle as kids get to high school. That was our goal, and so, we accomplished that goal. And our other goal was to really include and help our EL families feel more invited and welcomed and be able to access the important information that we share. So, we feel like we accomplished that goal and want to do even better next year.
It sounds like you guys breathed new life into open house.
I noticed in the phone message when Dr. Bucky got on, he said who he was, and then he went into Spanish, which I thought was great. I don't remember hearing him ever do that before, but it was very apparent that was your principal speaking to you.
Right. Yeah, it was exciting. It was exciting to see.
This was my first NHS open house, and it was incredible. I was so amazed by the energy, the enthusiasm of the teachers, you know, who were there after a long day of teaching and now presenting to families over and over again. Same at all of the schools that I attended, but it was a really incredible feeling. It was a great community feel. I left there feeling so good about our district. I really did.
We're very proud of the work we do, so we're thankful for that opportunity to share that good work. So, we use that opportunity to tell our story to our parents in person. So, it was a great night.
Very positive experience. Thank you.
I'm just curious, how long was open house for high school?
It was under two hours. I think it was over an hour and a half. So, I think I was home, I was home by about 8:00. So, it's hard to crunch it down. I think that Peter had some great ideas about maybe not front-loading everything that night and kind of spreading it out and giving them just the need-to-know information. That might help cut down the time. The night went by fast.
It did. It really went by fast.
So, parents really felt like they were going from class to class. They really only have a few minutes in each class. So, for the parents, it seemed like the feedback was that it went by fast. But it is a long day for all involved.
Thank you very much, Jen. It's a very successful night, I think, or week for all of the schools. All right, moving on to our draft's calendar.
I don't have a second draft yet because we're still taking in some information. I think the one thing that I've heard is that maybe one of the days in October could be pushed to March because there are three days, two days without school and one day with a half-day release. So, that's something that we'll talk about tomorrow with the administrative team. Not a lot of feedback on Christmas. I mean, I think when it's on a Tuesday, it's pretty clear that you would go through school, to school through the 21st. I think, Tim, if I, I was watching the video of the last meeting, and you asked about Easter, and I'm pretty sure it's on the 21st. So, the Good Friday is actually on vacation week that year. So, not a lot of feedback, but we'll talk and maybe tweak it and bring back another draft, or maybe for the first time ever, we'll go with draft one. Never know.
I understand seeing March has no days off or really, but I would just ask the question, what is more beneficial to our staff, to have staff development earlier in the school year rather than later? You know, because I think that's in March, we're finishing in June. Just something to consider.
No, that's, I mean, we've talked about it, and we've front-loaded the R and P D days, which are full days. So, I think if there was any move, it might be to an early release day in March. But, you're right. I would agree with you that front-loading the P D, then you're able to use what you've learned for the whole time.
That's a really good point. Thank you. All right, committee discussions and votes to be taken. May I have a vote to approve fiscal year budget directives? All in favor? May I have a vote to approve fiscal year budget calendar? All in favor? Before we vote on the Nantucket Public School field trip, I'm just wondering, there was a little bit of a discrepancy in dates. There's a date of trip, November 3rd and 4th, and departure time, November 4th, with a return time, November 5th. So...
I think that the 5th is a Sunday, if I recall.
I think you're just saying, shouldn't the departure date be the 3rd?
So, the departure date would be the 3rd. The 3rd is a Friday.
Okay.
So, they're talking about going Friday, Saturday. So, the departure time would be the 3rd. You're correct.
Okay, and they're returning on the 5th?
On the 5th, on the Sunday. They'll have two nights.
Okay, thank you. So, may we have a vote to approve NHS field trip for students in the Chinese and Spanish club? It says November 4th and 5th. So, Logan?
They say they're coming back on Saturday.
They say they are coming back on Saturday. So, we're talking about November 3rd and 4th.
Then it would be the 3rd and 4th.
Okay.
So, return date is wrong as well.
All right, so, may we have a vote to approve the NHS field trip for students in Chinese and Spanish club for November 3rd and 4th, 2017, to Boston, Massachusetts? All in favor? May we have a motion to approve the minutes for September 19th, 2017? All in favor? And a motion to approve transfers and invoices? All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report? Can you give us an enrollment update, please?
Sure. I think there's one in the back of your packet. This is the official October count. You'll notice that we have 1,627 students. That's actually less than September. I think one of the factors there is that we were probably counting more than just children in the seats. We were probably anticipating some kids that we were expecting to come and that could contribute to those numbers. But September is always, you know, pretty challenging to know that that is a good number and hence that's why the state waits for the October 1st for things to settle out. But looking at the 1,627, that's 40 students more than October of the previous year. So...
So we don't have a difference yet because...
We won't.
...real numbers for September.
Right. So we'll start with that. You'll see it from October to November.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions or comments?
I just find it always very interesting to look at these numbers.
Absolutely.
It's fascinating. Job security. On the horizon, we're light tonight for an agenda and it gets heavier in the second meeting. I would suggest that the school committee might want to consider pushing the second meeting from the 17th to the 24th. And the reason for that is that on the 24th, we would be able to release the MCAS data to you, which we could not do on the 17th. And then you might be reading about it in the paper before you get it on November 7th. So I don't know if that works for the committee, but that would be my recommendation to you.
But you'll definitely have them by the 24th?
Well, we are told by the department, I'd be very surprised.
Yeah.
I mean, they're very late in getting this. And you may recall that the computerized version of the testing was going to speed the return of the results, which hasn't happened. But, so if people are available, I think that that would be a good move. And if not, we'll do as you wish.
I'm a fan of May.
I will be at the Maryland College of Surgeons meeting.
It's fine with me. Should we check with Melissa?
Sure.
We'll do that.
Okay. All right.
And then at that meeting, I would expect that we'll have, we won't have math report two because that's getting a lot of, we'll have the budget update.
The math report three.
Homeschooling three.
Okay.
MCAS results and the ESL update. We would move the school improvement plans to the first November meeting. Again, those are predicated on the MCAS results and to ask the schools to have that ready. The one school that might be ready would be the high school because they did have their results earlier. But I think it's better to present all of those at the first November meeting. Okay? And then with your permission, I have two other things I wanted to mention. Caitlin asked me to let you know that there will be a joint Open House of the community school, their office, the Early Childhood Center, and the Head Start Program by the Cape Cod Child Development Program. And that will be on Tuesday, October 17th, from 4:30 to 6:00. I really would encourage you, if you can't make it that night, you should come over and walk through what is the red cluster. There is a conference room, district conference room over there. The Head Start Program now has 16 children and soon may have as many as 20. And that's 20 students that most likely, or in the past, would not have been served at all. And it's pretty, pretty exciting. And then, of course, the, we're delighted to have the Early Childhood Center back in the elementary school after I don't know how many years. It was a long time ago, Kim, that the ECC was there, but that's where it should be, in my opinion. That's where the children will be going and parents are using it daily. And nice to have the community school back in the schools. So encourage you to come to that and then I think you're going to cover.
You can, if you'd like.
That.
I got your message. Do you want to speak about it?
Well, the Screen Ager's program is going to be here. I think there's a program for the middle school tomorrow morning and fifth grade tomorrow morning. And then tomorrow night, it will be at 7:00 in the Mary P. Walker Auditorium. We're really excited and appreciative of FOMPs and, let's see, Nantucket Ozone and the Box, I think, all contributed. And I think it's really going to be an interesting presentation, growing up in the digital age and how we can all do this in a responsible way, in a positive way. So I would encourage parents to come Wednesday night. And then Thursday, I think at 1:00, is the high school, presentation of the high school students. So really, really excited about that.
Different presentation or the same one?
If I could defer to the FOMPs.
Hi, thanks.
Representative?
Yeah, no, it's going to be the same screening that everybody will see. The difference will be Wednesday night that there will be a panel of professionals made up of the school psychologists and psychologists and then both of them have a sergeant advocate who is a specialist in nursing. And we'll have Mrs. Mabell, who is a parent of children who are grown. We have two seniors and a three-year-old coming in. That should be interesting, hopefully, with anybody in the audience in the spring. The other thing I want to share was that all of the screenings will be, unless it'll have Spanish subtitles. So, as many as we can reach out to. There are actually, there are many others with subtitles, but I can only shout so many times. But I hope, I hope it's well-attended and I hope it does create some conversation in the school, in staff, with parents, community members, just to create the conversation about finding that balance.
Thank you. Looking forward to attending.
That's all for me.
Can you just touch upon the strategic plan meeting you had yesterday?
Pardon?
The strategic plan.
Yes, we had a kickoff of the strategic plan. I think we had around 30 people in attendance, really taking them, the group, through what the process is, who will be a part of that process or can be a part of the process, and the timeline for the process. So I thought it was a good gathering and didn't have a lot of questions. Some of the people in the audience had been through either the school strategic plan quite a few years ago. And then there are other people who have done it in their professions. So we have, I think, some knowledgeable people that we can plug into the steering committee and also into the four focus areas that were determined by the school committee.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Subcommittee work group updates, anybody?
I just saved one.
Okay.
You threw me the...
That's easy for you.
You threw me the ball.
I was thinking that maybe we should add that down while we're working on strategic plan.
Right, I think that's a good idea.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Keep mindful.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Well, Policies is a meeting next week as well as Safety and Security, so I'll have updates for you.
And negotiations with the TAs continues.
Yep. Thank you.
All right.
So we'll get back to you on the 24th, confirming or not the 24th.
Perfect, okay. Thank you so much.
Great.
Just to update you, the JV Girls Soccer 170. It's a nice, nice update. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn for tonight?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming, everybody.
Thank you.